9:07 on behalf of the board, I would like to welcome each and everyone here, all visitors are very welcome. And at this time, we will have our pledge of allegiance followed by a prayer by Mr. Ed Doyle with the church under the tree. He will lead us in prayer after our pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Doyle?
Father God, we love you and we bless your holy name. We thank you for these, your children, who serve our children. We pray over the staff, faculty, the teachers. We ask, Father God, that this not be a check the box exercise, that you cover these leaders on the board with the blood of Jesus, that your word says, "To whom much is given, much is required." Surrender their plans and their thoughts, their words, to the power of the Holy Spirit so that we might accomplish more than we can ever dream possible. We ask, Father God, that you protect them and the children and employees that they serve, send an army of angels to stand guard over them. Father, your word says, "Those who lack wisdom can ask for it and you will be granted." We ask, Father God, now, that you impart wisdom into the hearts, that you make your presence of your Holy Spirit real, and that you guide us in a way that pleases you so much Jesus smiles. We lift these, your children, in this prayer up to you in the precious and mighty name of the One who took our place on the cross, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Mr. Davidson, motion by him, second by Mr. Farrar. Those in favor, aye. Motion passed. And I would like to add the Blue Oval SK team to our addition to the agenda, and I believe Ms. Ursula Madden would welcome you and your fellow peers with you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for being here, and I understand you have a presentation to give.
Yes, sir, I do, and thank you for welcoming me and Blue Oval SK and my colleagues to your school board meeting today. I know you guys have a lot to get to, so we won't take up too much of your time. But we, of course, are very close by, being in Stanton, Tennessee. We're aware of the situation that you had with the storms a little more than a month ago, and we just wanted to offer our support and give you a grant of about $100,000 so that you could buy supplies and anything else that's needed for the interior of your schools to help educate children. And I've already directed an email to Superintendent Combs, and we just very humbly offer this and, you know, pray for your speedy recovery, you know, to get through this. So we're just glad that we could help, and of course, our board colleagues and friends that kind of inspired us, Mary Ann Dunn, that brought us to the team's attention, and we're just glad to be a part of the mission to help in helping the recovery. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Combs, would I add anything to that? I just want to say, and I told him this kind of before we started, but David's so wonderful to work with, I mean, you know, it's just, it's very humbling, all the things that people have done around us to help us out during this time, and we really appreciate that. And also, honestly, the leeway with which you've given us to be able to utilize that money for those two new schools or those temporary sites, for the technology and anything we need in there that, you know, that would relate to a supply for that child, thank you, because there are only so many markers and tablets you can buy, right?
That's right.
So being able to let us use that for, you know, everything, wireless access to more technology is very appreciative. So thank you so much.
Well, we wanted to do the most that we'd be able to help.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're not the government, so we're here to help.
You want to pause for a minute and get a picture, so y'all have a picture with the board meeting? Is that okay?
That would be great.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Hey, for $100,000, we can get a picture. Yeah, let's, uh, let's get y'all up here in front.
Hey, y'all.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Bird, get our picture and then we can get up to him. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mary Ann, you want to get in?
Uh, Mary Ann?
Mary Ann has my picture.
I'm here.
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 Will you close enough?
Where are we looking at?
Mr. Alice, will you step over between Mr. Isaiah, right there now?
That's why she went first, I wouldn't have taken that.
Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
And then right here, it's one, two, three. I took a couple seconds.
Thank you so much. Thank you. 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 Yes, ma'am, they've been great. Absolutely.
You can, there's just been a lot of, you know, it's hard, because we've been so grateful for everything, but you're limited, I mean, there are so many things you can buy, and so, you're right, it's been, they've been very nice about that.
Okay, we'll get back to it when it's over here. Do we, would anyone like to remove any items from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Ubank, second by Mr. McCann. Those in favor, aye. I oppose, motion passed. Dr. Combs, this superintendent update.
All right. Y'all are going to believe this, but I really don't have a whole lot to say tonight. No amines from the Gallagher police. But Hunter's going to come up and just give us a brief update here in just a minute. But I did want to let you know, Ms. Renee reminded me earlier, so the fall district meeting that I think y'all know about, that's going to be in Millington on September 18th. I know it's way in advance, but Ms. Renee, being the efficient person that she is, has already got us all ready for that and registered for that event. So please, if you have any changes or you won't be able to go as it comes a little closer, please make sure you let Ms. Renee know. And again, it'll be nice being in Millington. We don't have to trek across a long area, we can probably just meet there if that's okay. But y'all just, y'all just let us know. And then, again, Hunter's going to come up in just a minute, he has just a couple things to say. You know, progress is going well, and I think he can tell us just with the site, you know, I know we've had a lot of different questions about the temporary site itself, and we've had some water mitigation issues that we've been working through with the city, and it's groundwater, man, it's coming up, you know, through the, through the gravel, so we're working on a way to fix that, and we think we have a way to fix that. And FEMA's been very helpful and others in getting that done, so we have no reason to believe that those things will not be ready when the kids start back, I mean, no reason at all. But we're, you know, going to make sure that all that stuff's taken care of, we've been meeting with the fire marshal and, what was it, Mary Ann said, we're here, we're from the government, we're here to help. So, you know, we had a plan, and then, you know, the fire marshal, bless his heart from the state, came down, and now there's a whole nother point, that's right. So anyway, but we're going to work through all that. But I'm going to let Hunter come up and give you a little update. Anybody have any questions for me at this point? You do have a handout that I'm sure she'll talk about, about graduations and such. Yes, sir?
I mean, as far as the timeline on rebuilding the schools, I mean, where are we at with that?
The numbers that we've seen thus far would be like around a two-year period, you know, 18 months to two years, depending, you know, as we're looking, you know, supplies and all that kind of stuff, y'all know that, dealing with, you know, real estate, construction, et cetera. But we're still looking at probably like a two-year period, and what Hunter's going to talk about here in a minute will be the first step in getting that, that going, because, you know, we want to move, I mean, we want these, we want to go and get these buildings down, take them to the dirt, and start moving forward. The longer we wait, the longer it takes. So we're all about moving as fast as we can move. It's just going to be dependent on how well everybody else works. Insurance, you know, all indicators from insurance are that it's going to be taken care of, on the side of the site, plans anyway, it'll be, they'll be in the same, but I know we've heard other things about you're going to move it, you got, no. Both schools will go back where they were, same type of footprint, but obviously, everything's going to look a little different. All those plans will come before y'all when it gets to that point, and I was talking to the chairman earlier, we'll probably have some kind of a, where they present to your group, not in a meeting, and present to you, you know, here are the things, and then you would vote, make a decision, et cetera, in a meeting. But they'll be presenting to y'all with us at the same time, so you'll see everything, the plans and all. Sound good? All right. Mr. Hunter? I think I stole a little bit of your stuff. I cut you down, you only have 20 minutes.
I don't need that.
Yes, sir.
And I'll keep it brief. I don't have a PowerPoint, so tonight we'll just talk business, we will. So I'm asking you guys, as we have received our entries from the RFQs, which is a request for qualifications, and requests to move forward with the architects and engineering firm, in order to expedite to your question, by making this election, then we will allow us, Dr. Combs, to be able to, they will allow Dr. Combs to be able to negotiate contracts and whatnot with these architects and engineers, with this firm, to get this ball rolling. That would also include the demolition of the buildings, of what we're currently dealing with, as well as, you know, beginning the planning process, and also allows us to utilize services for some meetings that we have coming up for the fire marshal for our temporary buildings, because the same firm would have to execute those documents that are required. They, you know, have much confidence that they can help lead us directly for this project. So after review, though, request for qualifications, our committee would like to utilize the services of A2H moving forward. In the review, these guys, we already have a strong working relationship with them in the community, they have been a part of other builds, such as our tornado safe room at Atoka Elementary, that was the firm that we used there, worked on several other sites here in the county and the city as well. They are, they had a representative of A2H on site assisting the week right after the tornado, they like just expedited some structural engineers on site, so we were fortunate enough to work with that side of the guy, you know, that side of their team, to go in and, you know, survey the buildings and make sure that everything was deemed safe and what areas we could and we couldn't, you know, go in. So working with them was very, you know, pleasurable time and knowledgeable, you know, to gain the confidence that you would take, take on tasks like this. So with your approval, we would like to recommend A2H for the architect and engineering services, and would ask that Dr. Combs be allowed to negotiate a price for these services. So that would...
Got a motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Ms. McClarkin. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, motion passed.
I really appreciate it, gentlemen, I mean, ladies and gentlemen, I think it's going to be a good, you know, a good team to move forward with, and, you know, challenging time, they know, you know, they're very familiar with our codes and, you know, what it is, and also in line with what, with what Dr. Combs just shared his vision of what he wants with the school, I feel like they're very receptive to, you know, what we're hoping to accomplish, so. Do you have any question for me?
I will say this too, while Hunter's up here, number one, his team has been working tirelessly, and I want to say that in front of everybody, it's amazing how much the skid steer and the Mini-X and those things that you approved earlier, and those things have paid for themselves twice over, easily. I mean, we, all the trees we cut and moved to the road so they could be, all that was with the Mini-X that y'all allowed us to get with that money and the, and the skid steer, and it's been very beneficial. The other thing is, to your point, Mr. McCann, we're going to be able to move a lot quicker now with this recommendation and with this vote, that we can use A2H, and they'll start helping us with that process, because a lot of the questions that like the state fire marshal's asking, we need architectural and engineer expertise to answer those questions, and so that's where A2H will jump in and give us help so that we can start moving forward on that. That's, that's the piece we were waiting on.
When's the demolition of the two buildings happen?
So with the approval of this, now we can get into the ditch, if you will, and they can start expediting these documents that have to take place in order for us to be able to get a contractor on forward.
Certainly, because you have to cross.
Yeah, I mean, and it don't get there, I mean, I would assume after tonight, phone calls will be made, probably as early as tomorrow morning, to contact demo crews and things, it's just not wanting to put the cart before the horse, though we all be excited and we want to, we have to be reminded that we have this procurement process, and trust me, it's, it's, you know, literally like holding a bull act, like, hold on, man, we just can't let go yet, so, but...
So Hunter, on that too, I know that we removed the computers and technologies, I think the percentage was extremely high of what was salvaged, right? 90%?
97%.
Has everything else been removed that is going to be removed, I'm assuming at this point? Is there anything else left?
There, so we, no, because it's pretty much...
It's ready just?
Yeah, it's pretty much ready to, for the most part.
The stuff, the stuff that we couldn't get to was because it was deemed unsafe, and even, even service master could not get in those areas, but the rest of it has been moved.
Now, demo teams may come in and find valuables that can be salvaged, which that's part of their compensation package and how that's negotiated with RFP, which is the request for pricing, if you will, so whenever you hear RFP, that's what we're requesting. So there, I'm sure, there's, I don't want to sit here and say there aren't valuables, but they're valuables to someone that's going to demo, create a salvage, you know, for steel or whatnot, not necessarily, you know, something that we would go in and capture, so.
We have two warehouses full of items that they pulled.
Yes.
And we're working out a plan right now, so those teachers are telling me to take a look. It's just, that process is a little different too, because you want to be able to put it back in the new, in the, in the room in the temporary building like it was, so there's just, the logistics of that is what we're working out right now, so they can see their stuff.
The way the governor signed that bill about enhancing school security across the state, he's also mandated additional security measures, bulletproof glass, things of that nature at schools and stuff like that.
For all new builds, for sure. And so that's been very helpful, so as far as insurance is concerned, you know, they, they replace what was lost in there, you know, all that kind of stuff, but now that that's a part of code, when they redo that, insurance pays for, yeah, ballistic, I mean, yeah, bulletproof glass, all that in the front, that's part of it, so that'll be in there. The other thing that we're dealing with, Mr. Murray kind of mentioned this earlier, and that is that you can't, you can't jump ahead too quick, because we're also working with FEMA, and there are some things that FEMA will help us with that we can't cross up with insurance, I mean, there's a, there's a method, and so we have to make sure that we don't do this, so FEMA will still help pay for this, there's just some, we got to be careful that we don't take any missteps there, because, you know, FEMA can definitely help us put tornado safe areas in the new builds.
Right.
And that would not be covered under insurance, because they weren't there previously. But the way that we can work with FEMA is to help us with that, so we're just making sure, and A2H will be great to help us get through that, wade through that.
Good.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Rebecca Bird, direct instructions to report.
Thank you. I'm going to start tonight with our American Cadility Teacher of the Month. We will have tonight Ms. Whitney McPherson, who is a math teacher at Mufford Middle School, and her principal, Dr. Alonda Jones, is here also. I'm going to take just a minute to read what Dr. Jones had to say about Ms. McPherson. I want to nominate Ms. Whitney McPherson for Teacher of the Month because of her unwavering dedication to the students, school, and school community. Ms. McPherson is an exceptional teacher at Mufford Middle who is kind, thoughtful, caring, and works well with others. She always has a positive attitude, helps in any way she can, and always does it with a smile. In the classroom, it is evident that she genuinely cares for her students and is invested in preparing them both academically and socially. She sets high expectations for every student while providing instructional support for those struggling academically. Ms. McPherson deserves this recognition because she contributes immensely to our school. I have been nothing but impressed with her work ethic and every aspect of her teaching. I cannot say enough about Ms. McPherson and am convinced that she deserves this recognition. I am delighted to submit this nomination on her behalf, and I am Cooper proud. So congratulations, Ms. McPherson. Congratulations.
Hope my grandson gets you next year.
In your online packet, I have put a handout that has baccalaureate dates and graduation dates for our three high schools that are coming, coming up in the next couple of weeks, and of course, as always, we invite you to join us at those events and would love to see you there. We are, that's one of the most exciting times, is seeing those students walk across the stage, so please join us if you can. Also, in your folder tonight, you'll see a draft copy of our five-year strategic plan for your consideration. If you remember back at the board retreat, you all developed three goals, and then we took those three goals and your ideas that you had and added action steps to each one of those goals. And once it's approved, then we will format the plan in a little more visually appealing design, and Mr. Kirk has volunteered to help me with that, so thank you in advance, Mr. Kirk. But first, when your motion to approve the plan is drafted.
Motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Mr. Kirk. Are there any questions about the plan? It's really a good plan, a great plan. Those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passed.
Also, in your online packet, there is the annual agenda for board meetings for '23, '24, and if you approve that agenda, we'll get it posted on the website for the public to know the dates and what's going to be discussed, or the overarching topics that will be discussed at each meeting next year. You will notice that we've added monthly policy revisions by section for your consideration. Currently, as you all know, we contract the TSBA for annual policy reviews, and we will continue to do that, but we've added that item to the agenda beginning next year, if it's the will of the board, so that you all can review sections of policies for the following month and raise any items that you would like to, for discussion. So again, I would need a motion to approve that annual agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Ubank, second by Mr. Vincent. Are there any questions about the plan? It's really a good plan, a great plan. Those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passed.
Also, in your online packet, there is the annual agenda for board meetings for '23, '24, and if you approve that agenda, we'll get it posted on the website for the public to know the dates and what's going to be discussed, or the overarching topics that will be discussed at each meeting next year. You will notice that we've added monthly policy revisions by section for your consideration. Currently, as you all know, we contract the TSBA for annual policy reviews, and we will continue to do that, but we've added that item to the agenda beginning next year, if it's the will of the board, so that you all can review sections of policies for the following month and raise any items that you would like to, for discussion. So again, I would need a motion to approve that annual agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Ubank, second by Mr. Vincent. Those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion passed.
Couple more things. I want to provide you just a brief update, because I figure someone's going to ask me about this, about third grade retention. TCAP testing has concluded, and we anticipate that scores will be coming back on May the 19th, we've been told. On May 22nd and 23rd, third grade students who are not proficient on the ELA portion of the test will have the opportunity to take, to retake, I'm sorry, the, just the ELA portion of TCAP for promotion purposes. The test is online, it will have two subparts, and will take 75 minutes for the students to complete, and then once we receive those scores back, which is supposed to be within 48 hours, we will see, the schools and parents will be able to make decisions about summer school and tutoring options for the '23, '24 school year. So it's going to happen pretty quickly, but that is, that is the plan.
So that's before school gets out, then that's...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Be that last week.
I'd be surprised if we have those scores by the...
Sir?
I would be really surprised if we have those scores by the 19th.
Yes, sir.
So now that's just the ones that weren't proficient, they'll take that test?
They'll retake.
And the ones that pass that will be fine, that's the ones that, so there will still be the summer school option, or the summer program?
Yes, we will.
And all they got to do is show some growth in that one test or something like that, or...
So, I think I brought a sheet that I can read from. All right, so for the students who are not proficient, that retake, that's what you're asking, right? There's like a whole flow chart.
Right.
And I don't mind scanning this to you all in email, I'll probably should put it in your back, but I'll give it in there before tonight's over. So if they retest and score proficient, then, then they're good, right? May 22nd, 23rd. Otherwise, they have to have 90% attendance at summer camp and demonstrate improvement. We have not received exact guidance on what that means. Yes, sir, you knew what I was going to say. We also will have tutoring, and then there's also an appeal process that, that parents can appeal, the, the data, I guess, and the appeal can be based on them document, or them having evidence that their students' growth on our universal screener, which is ECCBM for our district, or an impact that, or I'm sorry, an event that impacts a student's ability to perform, such as a tornado. So some of our students may possibly, could be able to appeal based on the fact that they just lost their school to a tornado, or their home tore tornado. Now, we don't have any say on what appeals are accepted or denied, that's above us, but, but yes.
And also, for the ones that still go promoted to the fourth grade, they're still, what do they have to do through the fourth grade school year, do they like some certain...
Some of them, so if they are, again, I'm going to send you this, and I think it'll clear everything up for you, but if they are, so TCAP, there are four levels, three and four are considered proficient, one and two are considered not. If they're a one, they have to do summer school and tutoring.
They're the fourth grade school, yeah.
They're two.
But they still, they still promote it. That's right.
Yes, yes, but they have to, there are things that they have to do, yes.
Yes.
But I answered everything?
Yeah.
All right, but I'm going to send you this.
Okay.
Anything else on that?
I will say this, I mean, if we, if we have, we have students that fall in that final category, they've been through, you know, we are, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Bird, but we are encouraging, we are encouraging parents to appeal, I mean, right? Like if they get, if they find themselves in that final category, we are encouraging parents to appeal.
Sure.
I mean, we want as many appeals flying up there as we can get, so, you know, it's, I know we're recording this, we encourage parents to appeal if they find themselves in that situation.
There may be a, there may be some instructions on how to appeal it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, absolutely.
Will there be a link to...
It's online, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and we will put that out as needed.
Thanks, Bill.
Yes, sir.
And we talked to the principals yesterday at our principals' meeting about offering days where parents can come up and get help if they need help filling out the online forms.
Yes, that's what I was going to ask, to have that ready, because some parents may need that.
All right. Yeah, we discussed that yesterday.
So if we get, what are we doing, they still don't accomplish the goal, that they will be held back, or...
That's what the law says.
The law says... We don't foresee that being a big number level.
We don't foresee it being as big a number as we did when the, when the law originally came out, but there will still be some in that category that we're going to have to, that's when those appeals will be ending.
We will have students in, we don't have a number, because we don't have scores, but there will be, there will be students in third grade, summer school, and tutoring next year.
So how is it, how is it going as far as the legislative review of changing this law?
They're, I've, I've heard anything, my understanding is, my understanding is...
Probably let the police play out the cycle just to see.
They're done, yeah. Yeah, I think they're, I think they're done, at least to this extent, with what they're going to do for any changes. I don't think they're going to do anything else to it, at least not right now.
Oh, no, I played it out, I'm sorry.
No, they added a little bit, that was the benchmark, using some of the benchmark, but other than that, they have, they didn't change anything else.
They added, yeah, the universal screener part, they added, that if they have a certain It's not necessarily just a tornado, but that could be the basis of something that they could use for an appeal. All right, the last thing I have, as requested in previous years by Mr. Vincent, we had, we held telephone exit interviews for our folks who resigned from February until now, and the results of those are in your packet tonight for you to look at. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair, unless somebody has additional questions.
Anyone we know in the district that got any awards recently that you could think of?
Yes, we've had several. So we have, we have three folks who have moved to the next level, we have four now, but we have three folks in the district who have moved to the next level of competition for Teacher of the Year, Tennessee Teacher of the Year, they're regional semifinalists, say it correctly, Regional Semifinalists, Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kelly Looney. Principal of the Year is Dr. Christopher Morris from Crispie Middle School. And Supervisor of the Year is Ms. Brooke Schickley, who's our elementary supervisor. And then today, we found out that our own Dr. Combs has been named Southwest Core Superintendent of the Year. So congratulations.
That was rough, Mr. V.
How many other superintendents were in the running for that?
Seventeen, yes, sir.
So you put them all out, right?
They nominated me, so I'm not going to say anything bad about those guys. That's right, that's right, they gave me some homework, that's right.
We have all topics, I know we have a busy superintendent of the year in Tennessee.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Dr. Berg, thank you.
Thank you.
Director of Operations, Mr. James Field.
Good afternoon. I went back and congratulated Dr. Combs for being Superintendent of the Year. First assignment, he said, he said tonight, what did you say, less is more? I guess I...
Those are my words, yeah.
After I finish, Mr. Chair, if you would allow, Ms. Carissa Richardson, she's a sped supervisor at elementary. If you remember, the last time she spoke, she was going to come up and talk about typicals, typical kids riding the bus, pre-K, and to kind of explain a little bit more about that. I told you at our last meeting I would have some, some numbers for you, and that's the only thing that I want to cover tonight. Corporal punishment, in 2021, we had 132 corporal punishments. 21, 22, 21, 22. Our report is messed up for some reason, we're showing three, and I'm sure that's not accurate. 22, 23, this year, we have 334. 18, 19, we had 420. 19, 20, we had 292. Initially, I was disappointed in the 334 number, but when I reflected, my last year had covered it higher. I'm almost ashamed to say this, I think I had like 1,100, I pouted like 1,100 times that year. Now, when I changed the way I thought, is when the, one of the principals, when my daughter was at Brighton High School, calling me saying, hey, Coach Fields, we're going to give your daughter three licks. I'm like, oh, hold up, buddy. So I'm just not an advocate, there's so many things that can go wrong. You could get the DCS call that you bruised the kid, or, man, it's just a ton of things that can happen. But we are a corporal punishment district right now. So, and I hope that changes, but you know, in the broad scheme of things, 334 for 15 schools, that's, you know, it's not too bad. Fighting, 20, 21, 22, we had 394 fights. This year, we had 392 recorded so far. I'm not overly concerned with that number because I think we have a coding issue. For example, let's say two kids get into a fight, that should be coded as one fight. But when they put it in, they're going to say, James Fields, fight, Mr. Furrow, fight, and we're fighting each other, it's only one fight. It also could be the situation, let's say there's a group of kids, 12 or 13 kids get into an altercation in the gym at a ballgame, whatever, that's one fight, but we're recording for 12. Or it could happen away from school at a football game. So when we look at that number, it's not like, don't think there's 390 fights all year, all around the school, it's not happening like that. Vaping, last year, we had 156 vaping citations, this year, we have 201. I'm okay with that number because I really thought it was going to trip, I really did. And I think another reason for the rise is we have more elementary kids that were cited for vaping, and that's one through five this year. I mean, I'm thinking around 12, that's a lot. And because they get the vaping violation doesn't mean that they were vaping at school. It might have been on their person, it might have been in the car, it might have been, they just had a vape. So I'm satisfied with that number, of course, we'd want to get it down. Bullying, bullying and harassment, this year, we had, last year, we had 11 reported and nine confirmed. This year, we had 31 reported and 30 confirmed. But again, think about it now, we have 15 schools, we had 31 reports, 30 confirmed, that's still not a bad number. Now, I think the reason for the, my belief, the reason for the increase is we've lifted it so much. You got the social media, you got the harassment, you got the threats. So the teachers, the administrators are really working hard investigating. Well, one thing I did notice in this is 18 of those reports came from one school. So I think it's my job to go down and make sure that they are investigating properly because they may be missing something. But I think we're getting a very accurate report, though, that's the good thing. Tobacco, last year, we had 30 citations, this year, we had 16. I expected this because the problem is kids are not smoking tobacco as much. Now, I don't know if that's good or bad, because if they're not smoking tobacco, then where are they smoking? But anyway, last year, we had 190 kids remanded to alternative school. This year, we had 216 remanded to alternative school, that's around 2%. I didn't like that number initially, but again, if only 1.5, 2% of our kids are being remanded to ALC, that's not, that's not a bad picture either. Probably have several repeaters, a lot of different reasons, but when you compare us to the surrounding counties, we look pretty good in that area, so. Teen learning center, we had 60 this year, last year, this year, we have 52. We don't have a lot of, the courts remanded the kids to TLC, so we don't have a lot to do with that. However, there are several kids that are remanded to alternative school in the same year they were remanded to court school, to TLC. So those numbers could vary a little bit. The gap program, we had 35 last year, we have 46 this year, that's excellent. That's 46 kids that would not have graduated if it hadn't been for this program. The HSET program, the OGED, last year, we graduated 44, this year, 53, and that's, that's awesome. Overall, this is not bad, I just want us to be the, be the best we can be. You know, Dr. Combs made a statement I thought was great yesterday, was it yesterday at the principal meeting? You know, he looked at everybody in the meeting and said, there is no one in here that can outwork me. So I took that personally, you know? Any questions? That's a challenge. Thank you all.
Thanks, ma'am. Hey, and also, I want to say this, B, you can come on up, girl. One of the reasons I love James being in that position is because he looks at the data, and I love that. I mean, you know, usually when you think about discipline and truancy and all that, you're just thinking about, you know, remember the old mantra of the coach sitting up there with the pad with the table in detention, that's not what this is. We're looking at the numbers so we can make the numbers better. And that's why I love him looking at the data like he does, because we're constantly trying to improve that. And so thank you for digging down. You still can't outwork me.
Ms. Richardson.
Good segue, Dr. Combs.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone, I'm glad to be amongst you today. But I'm here today, tonight, to make you aware that we are proposing not to provide bus transportation for our typical students who attend Tipton County preschool for the 2023, 2024 school year. The reason for making this proposal is due to the fact that we can't find bus drivers, it is tough to find bus monitors, and our students are arriving late during their midday route. Each day, we transport about 90 students, 93 and 4-year-olds. Of the 90, 36 of them are typical students. We have 24, 22 in the AM and 14 in the PM.
Ms. B, I hate to interrupt, would you remind us again what a typical student is?
A typical student is a student that doesn't have a disability, they don't have an IAK. That's a good question, Mr. Parent here. By law, we are required to transport students with disabilities if the parents request it. A proposal letter has gone out to parents stating that we are proposing not to provide bus transportation for our typical students. However, we did say in the letter that a definite answer has not been given yet and that they'll be notified by the end of the school year. But I wanted to let y'all know tonight, we are proposing that because of the, we can't provide, we can't get bus drivers and we can't get bus monitors, we're losing so many of our people already and we're stretched. And we are the only district in this region that provides bus transportation to our typical students.
And that's preschool?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. Any questions? All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you, Ms. B.
You are.
Financial report, Mr. Billy Doherty.
Mr. David Zellman. There's nothing good tonight, so I'll back up a little bit. Actually, I'm going to do it so you can see the screen. Special request for it to be on the screen tonight, so you can see. Old folks, I didn't say that, okay? I want to start out with a couple of other items of business, if you all will allow me to do so first, please. So I want to call your attention back to the December 2022 board meeting, where you all granted approval allowing Dr. Combs and I to relocate the food service bank accounts to only one banking institution. So tonight, Mr. Chairman, we're requesting approval to move all those food service or school nutrition accounts to one bank, that bank being Patriot Bank, and to allow for the following signatories on all the accounts. Dr. Combs, James Fields, William Doherty, and Sabrina Matthews, as well as the appropriate cafeteria manager for each school. And we'll send a list of these individuals to the banks provided on District Letterhead. As to the motion to be made, allow us to do that, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion from Mr. Doherty, a request, Ms. Ubank, are you making the motion? Ms. Ubank, do we have a second? Mr. McClurk, are there any questions?
I'd like to ask a question, I remember talking to John about this a number of years ago.
Yes, sir.
And parents would ask me, how come I can't use a debit card or something like that to pay for lunch? You know, I think everybody asked to write checks, he said, well, we have so many accounts around, people can't do that. So now I'm thinking, if we're consolidating an account, will parents be able to do that?
This is, in fact, a step in that direction. I don't want to mislead anybody listening to this tonight, that this is going to start immediately, there's a process. Once we get everything consolidated to a bank, we'll approach the comptroller's office, we'll seek approval to go to electronic banking. You have to do that, they have to give you approval, there's some measures and steps that have to be taken. Not only for that, there are other things that we want to do online banking for so that people at SACC and different places are not having to write checks or bring money orders. And so that is a step, you all know, you all granted authority, and we've made a successful move at SACC to all the in-south banks, and now we're doing this move, and that is our hopes for the future is to make it much easier and be electronic.
Okay, thank you.
But that is a process, and so it will take a period of time.
Are there any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, next, I'd like to request from the board to approve for me to be added to the district's Patriot Bank accounts for the 141 general purpose school fund, the 142 school federal projects fund, the 143 central cafeteria fund, and the 177 school capital projects fund for the purpose of authorizing stop payments on the accounts. The authorization will be provided to the bank on District Letterhead. Basically, we're getting so many checks lost in the middle, calling the stop authorization, what? Right now, the only two people are the chairman and Dr. Combs, they didn't realize I wasn't on there to stop payments, so I'm asking for that approval, and the bank has to have it in the minutes to make the change.
We heard your request from Mr. Doherty, do we have a motion, motion by Mr. Vincent, second by Mr. Furrow? Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, motion passed.
Can we see an ID?
Yes, sir, fingerprint, believe me, I'm on the grid. I'll be fingerprinting at the time, for good reasons, might I add, for good reasons. So I'm going to try to connect to the screen just real quick to show you this next item. And get through all of this. So we all, you know, you all voted to grant and allow us to do a upgrade project to the HBAC units across the county at different schools. One of those schools happened to be Crestview Elementary, I mean, Crestview Middle School, where we were getting a chiller, which you will see a proposal here. We had ordered the chiller a number of months ago, it's been manufactured, scheduled for delivery. Well, obviously, we have no place to put it, there's only one other school in our county that has a chiller, and that's Brighton Middle, and it got a new one too. So we have written a request, this board has a policy in place in dealing with surplus property. We reached out to the comptroller's office to make sure we were following the proper protocol. We have talked to the Tennessee Department of Education because of all the rules that go along with basically getting a brand-new piece of equipment and turning it around and selling it and requesting reimbursement from the feds. So they've given us the authority to do that, well, they've asked, first, you all have to do it, and then we're going to ask you tonight, the board, to, basically, let me read this to make sure I get it accurate. "The air-cooled scroll packaged chiller that was ordered from training for Crispie Middle School using ESSR funds. The fair market value has been listed, and it's on this document, and you have this in your packet, for $77,567.57," that's an approximate value, that's a little, that's more money than we paid for it. So, or willing to pay for it. So anyway, Marion Samuel, the federal projects manager, has written TDOE on our behalf, and I've consulted the comptroller's office of the Division of Local Government Audit to confirm that the process that we're using is acceptable. And Mr. Chairman, I will ask for a motion tonight by the request that this chiller be declared surplus property in order for us to make the steps to sell it.
Motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Mr. McCann, are there any questions? By those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to the next item of business here. The next thing that I have is to request... See if I can get this pulled up here. Let me just read it here. So I ask for a motion tonight, Mr. Chairman, to allow Dr. Combs and his designees here at the central office to enter into negotiations with a company called Shouse. You have this contract inside your minutes. And so what Shouse is, an organization that provides, that will provide our district with FEMA category Z direct administrative assistance and project management for the DR 4701 event, is what it's titled. This event is called DR 4701 for the tornado events on March 2023. And this project will include the assistance of multiple FEMA project worksheets consulting for FEMA-related projects, including category A debris, category B emergency measures, category C roads, category D water control, category E buildings, category F utilities, category G parks, category Z administration, and Shouse will also assist with insured and non-insured finances as related to deductibles and cost overruns beyond insured coverage for FEMA grant request. And we can continue this contract. Now, we just got this contract proposed to us, we need to do some negotiations for pricing and how this is going to cover, but essentially, Shouse is an organization that is manned by former EMA directors from states, and they started a business, they work with FEMA all over the country, they've worked with, they gave us a reference sheet of about 47 incidents where they've worked with counties. And they know how to navigate FEMA's online portal, they know what the requirements are for the paperwork so that it doesn't slow the process down, and so we're interested in seeing what service they can offer. So, Mr. Chairman, the request tonight to allow Dr. Combs and/or his designate to enter into negotiations with Shouse and contract to start these services at some point, potentially in the future.
Motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Mr. Furrow, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, motion passed.
Thank you, sir. The next item I would like to bring to your attention is to request approval for year-end amendments. The office is the last time that we'll do amendments for at least six days. So these are amendments for the year-end amendments to the 141 general purpose school fund, and this is just to address areas that to year-end needing adjustment, those spreadsheets available in your documents. There's no change to fund balance, the majority of the changes are occurring intra-fund. These amendments do include changes to the voluntary pre-K revision four, which is one of the grants that run through the 141 fund instead of 142. No change to fund balance on the request, just simply a movement of dollars to cover potential deficits that would occur between... potential deficits that would occur between now and June 30th. This being our last opportunity to meet to address these. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate a motion for us to be allowed to make the year-end amendment adjustments to the 141 General Purpose School Fund as identified in the documents in your packet.
Motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Ms. McClure. Any questions? Those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passed.
All right. Next, I would like to request, Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the 142 School Federal Projects Fund amendments as requested from TDOE and E Plant, and as requested by the program manager on the following grants. The access for all learning network revision two, consolidated Title I Part A revision eight, consolidated IDEA revision seven, CTE Perkins Basic Revision Two, CTE Perkins Basic Revision Seven, 21st Century Remaining Fund Revision Two, and 21st Century Cohort Twenty-Two Revision Three. Again, no change. Now, there is new money reflected in the amendments. Last month, you all approved the fiscal pre-monitoring grant. Some CFO didn't put it in the revenue in the string, so it's in this budget document, but you've already granted approval for it. And the rest of these, there is one grant, the Title I grant brought in $14,000 revenue that is coming in, and that's the only new money, so to speak, that's coming into the budget. The rest of them are intra-fund and intra-grant adjustments for year-end. Mr. Chairman?
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Furrow, second by Mr. Jenkins. Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you, sir. Now, drumroll. So let's move on to the fiscal year. By the way, the documents I told you are in your packet, the draft documents, those are Excel documents that will present to the County Commission in Finance at their June meetings. Now, we're gonna move on to the budget proposal for fiscal year 23, 24. So allow me, if I may, to pull that up. Nope, that's not it. There it is. All right. So a couple of things for me to go over here tonight, just to bring you in, kinda into view of what we've got going on here. So this is our official unofficial request, because we still lack data from the state. So, but these items we're gonna talk about tonight really highlight the items which align with the strategic plan initiatives that you all have discussed, and that is school safety, much-needed teacher raises, and capital projects. And so we're gonna do that. So this request-
Excuse me. What do you mean, lacking data from the state?
So, if I may have just one moment, I'm gonna go into that in detail. But to get to the raise, this request tonight includes a reasonably conservative salary increase of 5% across the board, as well as adjustments accounting for the SACC tuition rates and salaries. Also, inside this budget, let me just talk about some unknowns in the budget, and what we're still waiting on, that we will have to make adjustments on as we get the data. So there is going to be a bona fide increase to our insurance rates this year. Property, auto, and liability policies. Also proposed in this budget is a new workman's comp policy. We talked about that in the last budget meeting, right? And so we don't know those rates, so we've had to project what we think potential rates may be. We may have to come back and amend that money higher, and maybe we hit the mark too high. If we did, we'll just move that money later to deal with it as we see necessary. The other thing is, I told you previously that TDOE had announced the new employer contribution rates for K through 12, and reduced the rate down to 6.81%. However, from 8.69, Director Bailey advised me the other day that Tipton County government is going to increase the TCRS classified rate from 5% to 6%, and that's reflected in this budget. So our percentage went from 5% to 6%. This is, I think, a conservative measure on their behalf because the state has published 5%. But they're doing 6% because our classified, non-certified employees are on that plan, the county of ops, that political subdivision plan that covers our classified employees. So we have to follow in tandem with that rate. So 1% increase TCRS. State group insurance. We still don't know the numbers yet. I told you in our previous meeting that I watched the April 13, 2023 benefits meeting. If you need the help getting to sleep tonight, maybe you wanna watch it, too. But they did say that they anticipate a potential increase in rates, but could not guarantee that, and that if it wasn't this year, it's going to be in some coming years. And their next meeting, by where they're supposed to tell us what the rate is, is May the 25th at 1:00 p.m., and you can watch that meeting live on the internet. And so I won't know health insurance increases until then. Another reason for the conservative 5% raise, because we have to take into account those costs. Also, I want to bring to your attention, and you'll find in your packet, the April 2024 TISA estimate, and that's in there. And so that amount is listed at $75,421,231.53. Now, another reason for us to address the budget in the manner which we have is because these numbers are not solid. This, again, is an estimate, and they're gonna take monthly numbers, which means they will do another draw in May, and our funding is based on this, and funding can increase or decrease swiftly if, you know, if the numbers change. I don't foresee our population changing. Of course, I don't hold a crystal ball, but we have to take that into account because of we commit to dollars in the budget, and the projections coming in lower, we're gonna have to find the money to pay for whatever we committed to for that fiscal year, which y'all know what that means, fund balance, right? So the other thing is, the county's fiscal capacity has officially been set for this year at a very long .50 and about 17 other digits behind that number, and that is the official fiscal capacity. The county's maintenance of effort, we talked about that, they have maintenance effort of $17.4 million, $17,420,000 to be exact. That amount, now, the state requires less than that for the local contribution, but they can never go below that because that is their established maintenance of effort. Later down the road, should the numbers fluctuate, and we get to the point where that rate starts to change or be dependent upon the state telling them the rates that are lower, then we'll see how that goes. But overall, that gives us $92,841,231.53, essentially in state and local funding. Now, I say that because inside our budget and above and beyond that, and you'll notice the revenue numbers are a little higher than that because you have other things coming into the budget. You have the juvenile court grant for ALC. You have the adult education revenue for our ABE program, and a number of other things that happen just throughout the year for us to budget for. Doesn't raise it significantly, but it does raise it. And what I want you to also remember, and for everybody to know, because that sounds like a lot of money on the front end, but we have to keep in mind that in this TISA-based weight comes out former grants, known to us as Family Resource Center grants, Safe Schools grants, SRO grants, coordinated school health grants. So everything of those that were funded previously by grants are now funded through this formula, so that is taken away from those dollars as well. The other thing that, to remind the board of why we do this 5%, when you commit tonight to a 5%, if you commit to a 5%, you are committing not just to a 5% this year, but you're committing to 5% through the pay scale for the next four years. Because if I make $30,000 a year today, and you give me a 5% raise, and I'm on a pay scale that guarantees me a step raise, you know, we have a step pay scale, and so that whole scale is going to increase by 5%. So we're funding not just here, we're funding four years in front of us, too. And so we try to keep that in mind when you're, and this budget takes that into account. And so where you may see, depending on where some of these numbers land as far as insurance and state insurance rates, we may be coming back if we, this budget is adopted or accepted, and saying, hey, we have a surplus of money this year because this rate didn't go as high as we thought it was or whatever, and you all can decide at that point how you wanna best spend it and what that looks like, what our needs are. As you all know, with the unforeseen ahead of us, I don't know how we're gonna handle in this totality all this construction and movement of money and changing and donations that are coming in, and so we'll be back, I anticipate, with amendments again pretty much every month for a period of time through to 141, till we get all of that hashed out. But I feel really good about this. I think it's a great raise for our teachers, it's much deserved, and that really kinda concludes that part of the budget. You have that document, it looks like this. You can go down through there and scan through it and see, basically, everything has increased by 5%, some by more in anticipation for any increases in the liabilities, such as the insurance and the TCRS and that type thing. Again, this is the budget, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to ask for a motion that, well, let me stop right there. In addition to the motion to accept this budget that's presented tonight, I'd also like for you all to grant authority for us to add to this the Innovative School Models Grant that starts in 23, 24. I've not put that in here yet because it is a four-years grant that goes out, and the funding changes over the four years, and we wanna drill down those numbers. This is that grant where they are putting Megatronics in the classroom and bringing in those counselors to focus on Megatronics. Help me if I misspeak, Dr. Furrow, Dr. Combs, but it's basically around this Megatronics program. And so those numbers will need to come into the budget. They're state grant dollars above what TISA is funding, and so we'll wanna add that to this document, Mr. Chairman. We'll also wanna add Title III to this document because we determined today in our CFA allocations that Title III is not gonna meet that threshold to be over into 142, it's gonna have to be into the 141. And so we'll add that amount of money. So what you see, the document that you see in your packet is going to increase by the allocations involved with the internal school, I'm sorry, Innovative School Models Grant and the Title III Grant. So the budget document we carry to the County Commission for presentation, if this one is voted through tonight, will be this document plus those two grants.
And the Innovative Schools Grant, let me just say that the Innovative Schools Grant is, over the course of the grant, is a $4.5 million grant. It's a million per high school, half a million per middle school, and we're gonna be, you know, using that, especially at the high school, the Megatronics stuff we talked about. But they all drew up a plan, Dr. Norton's been heading that up for us. But we're adding a career counselor-type position to each one of the high schools, and we're really excited about that. That person's job is going to be networking kids, getting them ready after they graduate for job, whatever they're doing for a job, career, college, TCAP, certification, whatever. That's gonna be their force, and it allows the counselors to do more counseling, and this person's job is going to be, they're gonna connect these kids to post-secondary, and whether that be job, career, whatever. That's gonna be their focus. And it's, we're really looking forward to that because we're gonna be one of the few school systems that has that. And that's part of what Dr. Norton wrote into the grant, $4.5 million.
Yes, right. And with that said, two other things that jog my memory on that I want to bring to your attention. I haven't yet decided what I, how I think it's best addressed. You know, we just got awarded the Spark 4.0 Grant through the CTE programs, brought in $96,000 into the budget. Guess what? Supply chain issues, Mr. Harvey and them are not able to get some of that equipment that they wanted, so it's gonna go into next year's budget, which means when we close this fiscal year, that money will roll into a restricted fund balance, and the next year, I'll come back for an amendment after the budget passes that says, hey, remember that $96,200? I wanna bring it back out of fund balance and spend it on Spark 4.0. So that's not in here yet because I'm not saying it's not relevant yet, but it's just not necessary yet. But I want you all to know about that, so when we go review our meetings, we know that we were asking about that money tonight, too. And so, Mr. Chairman, that is my request for a motion. That's a lot, I know, but there it is.
All right. Question? Let's do the motion, then we'll have questions later at any point. Do we have a motion for the request? Motion by Mr. Furrow, second by Mr. Davidson. Now we're ready for questions.
Uh, you said teacher rate, is that just teachers?
That is 5% across the board.
Boy, teacher staff.
All full-time. All full-time.
So when we talk about 5% raise, let's say the insurance rate goes up.
Okay.
Is it a true 5% raise that they're gonna get, or is that gonna tap into that raise in some regard?
So I'm very glad that you asked that question because that, you know, I was, many years ago, we would get a pay raise, and they'd raise insurance. I'm like, well, I got a 3% pay raise, and my insurance went up 3%. I didn't make any money. That's not really the case. I mean, is it going to impact it? The answer to that question first is yes. But if your insurance grows, goes up 3%, the district absorbs, you all in this budget absorb the largest impact of that. So to the employees, they have to take what they're getting or what they're paying on their insurance premium inside, whether it's single coverage, employee plus spouse or family, they pay a premium 20 times a year. They're only paying 3% on that premium, right? We're paying 3% on the 80%, 90% that you all provide. So 3% on a $40 a paycheck insurance increase is not the 3% you all are paying on the $700 paycheck that you're covering, right? And so will it impact the raise? Yes. But 5% salary increase is 5% on their base salary. It's significant. A 5% raise is significant on base salary. It will be reduced somewhat if they do increase insurance rates, but it's important to understand that that percentage is based on the employees' contribution. It's all the insurance premium, but the employees' only increase that they're going to see on their paycheck and what they bring home is the percentage against that employee premium, not the percentage that you all pay and cover as their employer. Now, you're paying the money, too, but they don't see that on their paycheck. They see it in their tax rate.
Are there any other questions about the request?
Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Vincent, definitely. All right. Did you work up that sub-increase? So we have projected figures in here for that. Now, I don't know where that's going to land. We have a meeting with Staff EZ Monday, and so I will know, we will know more about that then. Now, what I can say to you is, once we determine what the full impact of any insurance increase is going to be, and what the proposed, if there's a proposed increase to the funding, we'll see. I wanna see how the funding breaks down on the salaries for the subs. I know, you may know more than I do on that because you're on a committee, but we need to see where that's going to land and then what it's going to be. You're looking at about, if you wanted to give the subs a raise of 5%, I'm just gonna use that number because that's the number we're talking about tonight. You're probably talking about, I would say, I don't know.
Less than $5, isn't it?
Well, if you do it across the whole, what we pay to our contractor, and so you're trying to get them to that threshold, and your goal is what, to get them to what line, to what amount of money?
I don't know. I was thinking $80 a day initially, because I know, basically, we pay $70 a day for subs now, I think.
And is Shelby County paying like $100?
Yes. More than $100.
Yeah.
So if, you know, if you're talking about a half a million dollars, then you're probably talking somewhere around a $100,000 increase, maybe, you know, to take what we're already paying and add money to it to give them that extra, that number, that is a very rough number because I know there's costs taken out by these companies because they're paying them as their employees, so they're covering their employer liabilities otherwise. And I wanna say, just from my recollection, well, we're close to $100 a day in what we pay.
Right.
Now, it's just that $100 is less the liability, so what is getting to the employee is not that amount of money. Now, to get them, if you wanna get them to, did you say $100 a day to the employee that's subbing?
Eighty.
Well, I said eighty, but I wouldn't do it for eighty, but whatever.
Yeah. So you gotta figure then, if on $80, you're gonna have to figure probably 16% in payroll liabilities, rough estimate, and if there's any fee associated with that service, which I'm sure there has to be, otherwise, how do they run the service? Probably 25% on top of that. So we would have to look at those costs.
John, may I make a request?
Yes, sir.
When you talk to that dude with Staff EZ on Monday?
On Andrew?
Yeah, because I know he already told you, we should probably pay him $140 for subs or something, which ain't gonna happen or whatever. But anyway, if you, when you talk to him, if you'll ask him what his experience is as far as, you know, I would hate coming in with a new company, which I have a lot of confidence in, I hope things go well, but whoever it becomes the local manager and all this stuff, if they have a hard time recruiting people because their big pitch is, we're gonna pay you $70 a day, you know? Just if you check with him and see what his thoughts on that? Because I'm thinking initially- Just if you check with him and see what his thoughts on that, because I'm thinking initially, if we continue like it is and we have problems down the line recruiting subs and things of that nature, you may have to reconsider the rate we pay.
Absolutely.
Although I don't, do you really think that if we raise, let's say we raise it to a hundred dollars a day, do you think that would increase subs, our substitute base?
I mean, I'll be honest.
Just speculate.
I mean, the additional money is not going to hurt, right? So those that are on the borderline, it's going to help a little bit. But, you know, if we raise it by the, it doesn't mean we're still going to have all these people coming out of woodwork wanting subs. That's not the issue. I mean, because we've done all kinds of things like leaps and bounds to get more bus drivers, you know?
I was going to add, that was a question. You don't think an increase in bus driver pay would increase the likelihood?
Well, they're going to get five percent.
Yeah, that's not that easy for a bus driver. I mean, they're getting the lowest increase of it, everyone probably.
What issue is it anyway?
Yeah, they do. That's true.
So you don't, you don't think increasing the pay for bus drivers would get us more bus drivers necessarily?
That's a, man, that's a setup question. I don't know. I would, I would think so. I mean, it would, it certainly wouldn't hurt. But like, like Mr. Isaiah was saying, a lot of ours are doing it, like I could, I can name five right now that I'm very good friends with that don't do it for the, for the pay. They're doing it for the insurance that we offer because that's just, everybody doesn't do that. And so that's been the big thing. But I'm telling you, I think they are going to be, they will all be happy or excited that they're getting a five percent raise. I, I would think they would be. But now back to the sub question. I definitely think that it's worth revisiting after we have that conversation with EZ. If they're like, look, you know, there's like kind of a magic number here that we think may help you, I definitely think that's something we could bring before y'all and talk about it, no doubt. No doubt. Yes, sir. We can certainly ask that.
Now, I know I'm not happy with the raise personally, and I know John, deep down, is not happy with the raise. He was wanting to say seven to 10%. And we thought we were getting this big flush of money in from the TISA thing, and that just didn't work out. Because it's like, we'll give you this, but we're taking that. We'll give you this, but we're taking that and that too. So that, that didn't work out well. So I'm, I'm disappointed personally. Five percent is more than we've done in, perhaps since I've been on the board.
Yes, sir.
You know, but I'm thinking also, I know it's early to discuss, but is there a possibility that we could do bonuses out of fund balance perhaps, things that would not require, you know, a year-to-year, you know?
So, so here's what I would, here's what I would, I didn't stand up, I'll tell you what I said now. So here's what I would suggest. Number one, the five percent, just like Mr. Billy said, is going to be a nice number. Number one, it's bigger than we've received in a long time, number one. So that'll be good. But it also gives us some play so that let's say, you know, that some of these numbers don't come back as high as we think they will, that it gives us that leeway to say, you know what, next year, here's a bonus we can do on top of that, absolutely. But we have to wait and see what those numbers look like. And then if this group says, hey, we could offer something like a bonus at one time, then we could do that as well. But if you put too much on the front end, that probably wouldn't be an option. And we run the risk of some of these other numbers like insurance stuff coming back. And then we can't handle that number. I would hate to make an offer of, we're going to give you all the seven percent raise and then, oh, wait, never mind, we can't do.
Right, right.
No, I'd rather do five percent, see where that goes, and then we could always offer, y'all could always, you know, recommend a, or vote on a bonus later on, like next year and say, hey, but there's this too. And I think that would be, well, thank you.
We are also talking about longevity pay for teachers from the 20 to 30 year mark. Longevity pay stops at 20 years for all teachers. They've always, all the veteran teachers with 20 years were always playing about that. Of course. I guess that's because of the TISA money. That's out of the question also.
Pretty much. You know, like, so you remember, like, you, and you said it, when you said earlier that, you know, we're taking this out, this is going to be in there, we're taking this out. So you remember when the governor said, oh, by the way, I'm doing 125 million for teacher raises there, or teacher increases this year, for teacher pay this year. And then like, what, three weeks later, he said, oh, by the way, that's already in TISA. You already had.
Right.
Yeah, well, we got our first estimate a year ago, right? March before last. And that number was the, basically the number we have right now. So how did they know that 125 million that he just said we're going to get was in there a year ago? So there's all that kind of stuff. They like, we're going to do that, but then we're not going to do, well, we're going to do that. And I'm telling you, first year with TISA is our funding formula, I'm not going to lie to you, I'm a little scared of it. Because it's not happened yet, and we certainly haven't seen the money yet. So, you know, I'm afraid the more we stick our necks out there, we better be careful. At least if we get a year under our belt with this new funding formula, I think all of us, including you, will be a little more comfortable that following year, once we see what actually happens. We have new commissioner coming in, you know, the other commissioner that's leaving in June was the one that was really a big proponent of TISA and pushed it really hard. We have a new one coming in, starting in, what, July, I guess, July 1? We don't know what that's going to look like. So, I mean, I, I think this is a good increase, but it's still conservative enough that it gives us room to play. If we play it wrong, we want to do a bonus or something like that then. I guess, yes, sir. Those are all good questions.
Yes, I have one more. About the SROs. Have you, have you or has the state given you any estimate about what we could expect to receive as far as SRO money?
I have not seen that. Now, including this budget, is the funding necessary to maintain what we have? Now, should the state come back and they issue a supplemental grant that we've experienced in the past, then you all would have the discretion at that point to take this money that we've budgeted for SROs and apply it elsewhere.
Do you know that off the top of your head, just approximately?
For what's that?
SRO money?
Six fifty.
Six fifty?
Six hundred fifty. I know on the low side, I could look at it, there's, yeah, maybe seven fifty high side.
Well, if the state pays for that, that'd be a bonus.
The figure I'm talking about is the figure you all appropriate. Now, what they do in a grant, because you know, the grant, the last year's grant, they were giving fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents per SRO.
They were phasing it out.
Yeah.
So, and, and just, you know, speaking on what you just said, that's a great question. So let's say, basically, we're appropriating, and Billy, you let me know if I missed this, like 50 grand per officer, something like that. For the sheriff's department, it's a little bit more because of what they're dealing with. But 50, 50 grand per officer, right? Well, let's see, let's say the state decides, you know what, we passed this, we're going to give you an SRO for every single school. Remember they said every school, not just private, public, all of them. Let's say they're going to appropriate 30 grand for each one of them. Well, that makes us, basically, that's 30 grand times however many we have that we pull back out and say, now we have this money, just like you said, for however you need, however y'all decide to use it, whether that be a bonus or something else, or something we need to add to this, or a textbook line item, or a tech, whatever. But once we know that figure, we'll be able to subtract that because the higher number has been built in.
When it comes to state, it's like, wait, isn't it? It's frustrating. We've worked this budget and like, what if this happens and what if that happens and we've gifted till I'm like, let's just present it. And then we'll wait until, you know, you can.
That was one question I had, and Dr. Combs just answered that, was what the, where's the money the governor said he was going to put up?
I haven't seen or heard of that yet. Now, Mr. Chairman?
125 million?
Yeah.
Or the?
The SRO.
That was my question there, the 125.
The 125 is in TISA already.
Yeah. So, you know, we're talking about the five percent. I was wondering where the state's money is at. But, and just to comment to what Mr. Vincent said, how much they're going to pay for SROs? I have a feeling it's going to be a little, and I'm glad we're doing what we do, and I hope we can continue and plan on continuing doing what we do.
And the thing that we have to remember, you know, if they come in with grant funding and we are able to reallocate the dollars, we cannot commit, I, I would not recommend allocate those dollars to a recurring expense. We may pick something we want to spend money on and spend it because if the next year they cancel the grant, we've got to have those dollars back. And so that, we have to be mindful of that as well.
Are there any other questions?
So is this, we're, we're going to approve this budget as it's presented right here?
As presented, yes, sir.
Okay.
141 General Purpose School Fund.
We just got it tonight, though.
That is correct. I was, you know, we've been waiting on the numbers. And there's been nothing to really give in what we're giving you tonight. I understand the frustration that I hear in your voice, but it's, it's tonight, we don't even know the insurance premiums.
We talked once before about updating the budget to where it would have a, like a number, like a personnel per, per line item.
Yes.
It would just be good to go back and review because, I mean, when we get it and we have to vote on it tonight and then we're done, you know, when you're just looking at a whole number, I guess I'm going to go back and review it after we've already passed it just to kind of know some things, but could, could we get a copy of that that would have some of those?
So there are a number of ways to accomplish that, and it depends on, you know, and some of them take longer than others. Now, you just want a number besides the 119 line item, I think, for there to count.
What it truly costs. You know, we pay a teacher so much money, but what does it really cost to have that teacher? Would just be a good number to have.
So that varies because you've got a pay scale with 20 steps and five lanes. And I can tell you the average salary, well, this average salary last year was right around $58,000. And then you've got some as high.
Total compensation, if you included the insurance, you know, the pensions that they get. Those are just some numbers that would be good to know. I mean, as far as the way it's promoted, because we didn't show the pay scale, teachers only make so much. That's not the true cost for those.
That's not the true benefit of what they're getting.
True benefit, yeah.
That's right. And because there is, this district does contribute a significant amount of money to health insurance, and you're matching their retirement.
And it's a lot, and that's when you see those big increases, and it's like, our, our only options, the one, I don't, I'm not familiar with the insurance that we have or, or the school has, but is it only through the state?
It is the state teachers insurance pool, which is the largest insurance pool in the state of Tennessee. It might be a close run. FedEx is either right behind us or right above us, but.
It'd be interesting what they pay per, per person or, or, you know, there's no, you can't really evaluate anything with just the way the budget is here as far as.
You want to know what an individual employee pays?
I'd just like to know some of that.
Oh, I would need you to, a one shooter that shows that.
Yep.
You know, what, what would you have if you were employee plus spouse?
I'm just saying, so one thing I did look at was our transportation budget, and this was based off last year. And it was good to take what we're spending on transportation divided by our number of students to see how we're doing. And how do we compare to other counties around us, what they're paying? And just by doing that, I was able to say, man, we're, you know, we're like higher, our cost, that's the way I'm looking at it. And maybe we're providing a better service and that's why some of that and some of that's all okay. But it's like, do, do we, do we ever compare ourselves to any other counties around to see how we're doing?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
All the time. Because, you know, we have to stay on top of that. Now, I don't do that. There are people that work here for Dr. Combs that are comparing. Now, I'm looking at salary schedules for, because of the people we're losing. If we lose people to a certain place, I want to know why. And so we compare those figures and then you got what do they pay for insurance? But the majority of teachers are all in the same retirement system and the same insurance system. It's built for teachers.
Sure.
And we can get, like, if you want to, like, like shoot me an email of like, kind of a breakdown of what you'd like to see, we'll make sure we have that. We'll get you all that. Yeah.
Because I, I, I would, that's the way I think you should promote it as far as what a teacher makes, is not.
Like the full package?
The full benefit thing. And that's, that's what you really need to push because a lot of them, you know, and I'm all for the raise, that's good. They, they need to be paid more, but at the same time, they need to know what their true benefit is.
I think the teachers know. I mean, if they work here, they know. I mean, you don't think they'd know?
Well, you know, some talking about if they get a five percent raise, but their insurance went up three, or three percent, three percent. Well, obviously, the three percent on your salary is more than what the three percent costs, you know?
I'm sure teachers, I'm sure teachers know what they're making in their benefit package. I'm sure they know when they come in and talk to Human Resources, right? Mr. Doherty?
HR there.
HR explained that. As a matter of fact, we have an onboarding process where they're sat down with Mr. Darnold, who's the benefits coordinator, and they cover all of the options and what they can choose, whether they choose the health savings plan or whatever that variety, but I think we have like 18 plans of insurance they can choose from off the state plan, and then what their benefits on retirement are, what their other investment options are that we don't match.
That's part, all part of the onboarding we do with the new folks.
It's a pretty good.
Oh, yeah. I will say this too, and it depends on, it, it depends on age. So let's say like, you know, a lot of the, the newer teachers, first three, four, five years, Mr. Vincent, you remember this, first three, four, five years, more of them are like, how much are we making, right? And then you start hitting that magic number and you're like, how good is this insurance? You know, and so then it, and then it kind of melds. Then you kind of get a both in there, right? I mean, because, I mean, Lord knows, they all need a 50% pay increase. But I mean, but my thing is, it also varies among the age and what stage they are as far as which number draws them in the best. And the full package is important, though. So, yeah, I, I can see that. Absolutely. It's a good point.
Are there any other questions? Are you fans supposed to report? Those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
All right. The last two, Mr. Chairman, obviously, 142 and 143. I'll ask the board's approval tonight that once the state publishes the consolidated funding application in its entirety, that we'd be given the authority to present that document with those figures to the County Commission for Approval. They're loaded, some of them are loaded in E-Plan, but the dispersments are not all there, so we can't load that into a document where you can look at it. Obviously, you know it's going to start out about $6 million, and by the time we get done next year, it's going to be somewhere around 25 or 30 million as things come through the system. But that initial document is about $6 million. I just don't have anything to produce. We can look at E-Plan together and I can show you what's loaded thus far, but my, my request to the board would be to grant us authority to present to the County Commission for Approval that which has been approved by the state in E-Plan.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Mr. Vincent made the motion. Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Ubanks. Are there any questions about that? All those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, motion passed.
Same request for the 143 Central Caphir, since it's not settled tax rate either, it's also federal funding.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Jenkins, seconded by Ms. McClarky. Any questions? Those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, motion passed.
And these documents, once they're in their stages, and Dr. Combs and I don't make that, you all will be provided that in your folder so you can look at it too, right, you know?
They'll be provided after the County Commission meeting.
You all will have them in your finance holder before we give them to the County Commission for Budget Presentation. Just, I anticipate it's going to be, marrying her from her finance consultant, that they were loading it up, and they did, but they didn't load it all. So like, some of the figures aren't in there. Part of Mr. Harvey's budget's already in there. We just don't know those full numbers. And so, but to get back to the point, once we know them, we're going to plug them into a spreadsheet that you all are used to seeing like this one, and we'll publish those out to you.
Okay. What does that mean, by the way?
We haven't been told yet. Now, we'll anticipate to present this at the June meeting, which is the meeting they typically, they typically will set the dates for which we're going to present budgets. And last year, Dr. Combs, June 22nd, I think, presented our budget. And so I would hope that at our July board meeting, we'll have more information to give you. You will see it before we presented it at the June meeting.
I was going to say, John, if he needs some security, send us an email.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Doherty, is it been signed?
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate you doing that tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Will, do you have? I saw him. I thought maybe we had done something.
Will would love to come up here and talk back.
Okay.
This is Will Beasley, y'all. He's worked on the finance team and has done a lot. He started here in January. He's been training heavily, so he's doing a great job. He didn't want to come to the podium, but like, something.
I can do an extra wrap.
He said, I don't know who that Vincent guy is, but I don't want to end.
He's a, he's an endless possibility.
That's exactly.
He's homegrown.
Dr. Combs, do you have anything to add?
I just want to say this, you know, thank y'all again for everything. I do want to make one comment on Stouse or Strauss? Shouse. Shouse, missed it, all the way around. So, we met with them the other day. The cool thing about that group, y'all, is that they help us with FEMA not leave any meat on the bone, right? So when we're going through that whole process, you just, you miss one deadline or you don't turn in something that they needed for this process. That's what that group does. And they will help make sure that we, that nothing's left out there, that we have asked for and received everything we need and navigated correctly through that process. So we appreciate you letting us do that because that's going to be incredibly beneficial. That may be a lot of money that we're able to save right there from them just making sure that we don't meet, miss any deadlines and they help us, they know all the right verbiage to use and all that kind of good stuff. So that'll be a good partnership, I think. So thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Does anyone else have anything? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Jenkins, seconded.